Okay, I'm gonna officially call tonight's city council meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Beatty?
Here.
Counselor Tivnan?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Teeter?
Here.
Counselor Kimmy?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Hassan? Okay, I see her on the screen. Thank you. Counselor Hartmeier Prigg?
Here.
Counselor Duggar?
Here.
All present.
Some, on September third, twenty twenty-four, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding ordinance amending Beaverton Code, Chapter three point one one, relocation assistance procedure and repealing B C Chapter three point two one residential tenancies. Okay, council tonight, we have one agenda item, and it is a work session on our council rules. Uh, before I turn it over to the city attorney, I just wanna remind us how we got here. So this came out of the retreat. This was um, wanting to have council rules that reflected this council. So we created a subcommittee which Counselor Tivnan, Hartmeier, Prigg, and I sat on. Um, over the last year, we have met pretty regularly, almost monthly, sometimes more than that. Uh, to go section by section through the rules to make sure that it not only matched what we understand our council where we're at, but also with our new form of government. So there was a lot of amending things to just match kind of the era that we are in. We took a lot of feedback from that very first work session we had at our council retreat where we heard from the entire city council about things we wanted to work on. We had pages of notes we went through. And so tonight, we picked four topics for us to go through as a council. And then if a second work session is needed, we'll come back. But we had pre-sent out, or the city attorney had pre-sent out some information for us to go over. With that, I'm gonna hand it over to Megan Thornton, our ass- uh, assistant city attorney, who kinda helped usher us through this process, who kept us really on task, kept reminding us what was the main thing, what were we trying to accomplish. Um, and to get all of us in the room to do that over and over again. The city manager was involved, the city attorney was involved. We've had a lot of voices kinda helping frame to where we are today. With that, I'm gonna hand it over to Megan.
Thank you, Mayor, and I am going to share my screen um, to go through a brief PowerPoint. And you gave a great lead in. I was gonna talk tonight about a recap for the project. I'm gonna skip that. Um, so we'll end up talking about, uh, or at least very briefly. While I go over the highlights, I think you've covered most of that already. Um, let's see. Okay. I don't think you can see my screen, can you?
Not yet.
In theory, this is not hard. Okay, here we go. Now do we have success?
Yeah, but it's in presentation node mode, so we can also see your notes.
Oh, that's nice. Um.
Megan, if you need me to-
Swap the screens?
If you need me to help you share, I can.
Okay, is that better?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, as I mentioned, um, I'm gonna give you just a very brief overcap or recap of the project. I'm gonna highlight the four priorities that Mayor Beatty briefly suggested that we would go over tonight. And then finally, I'm gonna go over next steps for this project. Um, it's been a very long project, as the mayor stated. We have been meeting regularly, and because the subcommittee has been working so thoroughly on these sections, please feel free to jump in and add a little bit more perspective whenever you have more to add to the slides. So, the first thing that I just want to mention is the project scope. I just wanted to put up the statement that this governance subcommittee has been working under over the last year. And then identify those four priorities for you, so you uh, know where we're going tonight. We're gonna talk about boards and commissions, proclamations, communications, and then roles and responsibilities. Now, three of those are clearly laid out in particular sections of the council rules, and you'll see that. But priority number four, the roles and responsibilities, is really something that is riddled throughout the council rules. And so there's quite a number of sections where you might see roles and responsibilities touched on throughout the document. So, beginning with the boards and commissions, and we, the council has seen a preview of this material, and we did incorporate after the previous council retreat, your comments. But the highlights include clarifying the appointment process. And again, here, this wasn't a situation where we were trying to create something new, but instead, we were trying to capture what the council's process already is and place that into a council rule. Next, in Section three point two, we wanted to clarify the key, the council liaisons. So that's the appointment process, the fact that the mayor suggests who should be appointed, and then the council confirms that. Also, in that section, you'll see reflected your preference for quarterly attendance at meetings. And there's guidelines for involvement. You'll also see that there's no required reporting to council or board. There are other avenues that we can get information to those boards more efficiently, instead of requiring the council liaisons to serve that function. And then importantly, we talked about in the retreat, the fact that the city manager was able to do the work of actually establishing the work plans and grounding that in the council's rules, and that is also reflected in the board and commission section in Section three. And then finally, and I'm not sure that this was, um, this became clear that we needed to have a section as we were working through the section with the subcommittee. But there's a very clear distinction between the city boards and commissions that are established and they're internal to the city, and they make recommendations to the council as opposed to non-city boards and commissions, and the roles that our councillor and our mayor play when they're sitting on those regional boards and commissions. And so there's a section that distinguishes that role, talks about the appointment process, and deals with the attendance expectations as well. And so with that, that's kind of a summary of the subcommittee's first priority, and so if any committee members would like to speak, we could certainly do that. And then my thought was to get any feedback from the council.
I would just say, you know, this section, we've heard a lot from the council on, and we've had four years of kind of operating under this. And so I think we've also had staff input, and I would say that I think we're in a really good place here on where we wanna do, because we've already had a meeting as the council on this already as well.
Great. In that case, I will go ahead and move forward. This one is also very simple. This one, um, there was nothing additional to add in after the retreat. The council was happy with where the draft was when we met during the retreat, so this is done, and it's only here to show you that it's complete. And there were no changes really that were made, no substantive changes were made to this section. Again, if you don't recall, cause it has been a while, the real key here is that it sets out three very particular ways to go forward with a proclamation. One of them is a proclamation list, which is something that when we complete these council rules, we'll be bringing forth with the package to the council for approval. And that list will be basically the list that every year the city manager can just go ahead and put those on the council agendas at the appropriate time for the proclamation to be read. And then, second, there's the mayoral proclamations that come out of the mayor's office. And then finally, a process for requesting a proclamation uh, from the council. So with that, I will go on to the next section. Um, this is the council relations and communication section. It, it does exactly that. Um, it's basically tries to outline all the different ways and groups which the city council communicates with, and provides guidelines for doing that. And as you'll see here on the slide, like the basis for this entire se- section is mutual respect. And all of the various groups that are included here, um, again, it comes back to mutual respect, but it covers all of them, council members, staff, advisory board members, how to communicate um, with the media. All of those things are covered here in Section four. Mayor, or would any of the other subcommittee members have anything to, to add to this particular section?
Ashley, go ahead. I'm sorry, Council Hartmeier Prigg.
Um, so this one, I think, was also something, um, uh, that was important to me. Like as a newly elected official, as us being a younger council, and a lot of us coming into office during a pandemic, and so some of the supports that happen kind of like out in the community, right? Of helping new elected officials get on boarded, and um, some of the things that come from outside your jurisdiction, like not all of those were there. Um, and I felt like it was really important in our council rules, being that this becomes like a published document. It also kind of helps set expectations for someone that wants to potentially run for city council. So this section, to me, kinda is not only guidelines for ourselves, but guidelines of expectations of future electeds as well. And you can kinda get a feel for like, what's it gonna be like? What type of communication is gonna be appropriate? How to engage with staff appropriately? Um, I think this also just for those moments where you're maybe not sure, it's just nice to have something that we've agreed on as a body, is like, this is how we wanna operate. So, um, this section was definitely a section that I feel like I weighed in a lot because, um, of just how important it is to be kinda given a guidebook. It is sometimes awkward being a new city councillor, um, or being a newly elected official, so this is something that we get to use as a tool for ourselves. And also helps set expectations for the people that we interact with, particularly staff, right? That we're saying, we agree that this is how we will show up for you and to you, and um, especially when we are representing the city, how we will show up.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, just adding to that, um, uh, this was an area that was really murky for me in terms of is like, when am I in the capacity being a councillor versus when am I just Alison Tivnan out and speaking my own mind? It gives a lot of clarity around that, around um, social media, around, a- and a lot of this, it wasn't like we made it all up as we went along. Megan started by pulling a lot of best practices from guiding documents that are very commonly used by other municipalities in the state. And then we looked at them through the Beaverton lens, and, and tailored as, as we went to just the way in which we roll to either more clearly define things, or, or shift things slightly to better reflect just the internal mechanisms of how the city works. Um, pretty straightforward. And I think there was also care taken to kinda directionally indicate things, like who does what and when. To just give a little bit more of that, like, um, Counsel Hartmeier Prigg was saying, that, that playbook to go off of. I wish I'd had it coming in when I was first elected, and I, I know once we've approved this adopted, I'll, I'll probably have a printed copy nearby and probably with me um, and my notebook for every meeting going forward.
I would also just say, like, none of this is like, oh my god, I never thought about that fo- before. It is how we're going to communicate the city's stances to the public. Who is the person to communicate that? Who is the representative to do it? Um, and so a lot of it makes sense already, and I think when you read through it before this meeting, you probably thought all of it was normal, because it's just how organizations operate and do business. So I would say the only thing that we really added, as somebody that worked on this document in the prior administration too, was the city manager, and how our interactions would be with her, and how we need to notify her and me when we're talking to the media, those kind of things. So it interweaves the city manager's role in our communication process as well, and that was definitely missing from the last iteration. But a lot of the rules around respect and communication and making sure that you're differentiating between your point and, or a representative of the city was already in this document to begin with.
And to add on to the points that all of you have made, this section, it also does touch on those roles and responsibilities, which I mentioned at the very beginning, is something that's riddled throughout the entire document, and you'll see that here. I mean, there is a section where it talks about respecting staff time and asking, making requests through the city manager's office, and if those requests are more than two hours, the city manager, the city attorney evaluating that and determining how to move forward. So it definitely lays it out, I think, in, with clarity that was not present before. And so hopefully, the council will find that, that helpful. Now, Mayor, would your preference be to take any comments if there are any at this point on this section?
Yeah, we can do that.
Do you mean, sorry, do you mean, oops?
Yeah, from, like, if you have a comment, not the three that have already been talking. Counselor Hassan?
I, um, sorry, I was looking at the agenda bill, and I had like listed out some of my comments. I don't wanna stop this presentation if there's more to just like share some of my feedback on what I saw.
We're going over these four sections, so if you have comments on this section, this is the appropriate time for that.
Okay, I didn't list out my comments by section, so I'll just wait till then. Thanks.
Okay. In that case, we are going to be flying through this. So, um, the, the next and the last priority, and the reason, again, I organize in this way is because these are the four priorities that the governance subcommittee uh, recognized at the very beginning of this work. And what I put here on this slide for the roles and responsibilities slide is a number of sections to just highlight how it is interwoven throughout the document. I already mentioned on Section four, some provisions that were included that, that again, highlight the roles and responsibilities and how that works. But there are a number here. Um, you know, so for example, it makes it really clear in the rules that the, you know, compliance with government ethics law, that is on the individual council. Things like reimbursement and compensation, when the roles and responsibilities, when a councillor is acting as a councillor in their official capacity, that's outlined in Section one point six as well. Um, and then how you would go about getting reimbursement based on whether or not you're acting in your official capacity or not. Section two point three, talking about pres- presiding officer and duties of the council president, this is something that um, you know, the, for example, the charter talks about the council president stepping in when the mayor is un- unable or unavailable to act, but it doesn't contemplate what that means. And so the subcommittee took, took that piece of work upon itself to try to define what that means and give a, a reason or a definition to unable and unavailable, so that it's clear when that would come into play. Um, when we're talking about agendas for regular meetings, that's something that is done by the counts, or by the city manager with input to anything that the council's recently requested, as a majority goes on the agenda, right? The city manager's always taking that into account. And so that's reflected there again, and how, how the body and the city manager's office work together to come up with the agenda for the regular meetings, right? But ultimately, it's the city manager who sets the agenda for the regular meetings, knowing what the council's business and priorities are. And so that section kinda lays that out. And there's also a corresponding section in the Beaverton Code, which we haven't talked about this evening. And I do wanna remind the city council that this work is really it is, the, to get to the end, requires two deliverables. The council rules document is one deliverable. It will be adopted by resolution. So to the extent we could, we wanted to put as much as possible in the council rules document, because you can change those in one meeting. You don't have to go through a first and second reading of an ordinance. So it's a more efficient way to adjust your rules and make sure that they work for a council over time. Um, the second deliverable is going to be an ordinance that will modify Chapter two point one one, which is currently where many of the council's roles reside. So, you know, keeping that in mind, we've got these two deliverables, and some of these sections, like the agenda for regular meetings, that's currently stipulated in two point one one. But it's being moved to Section two point seven. And so when I bring forward the Beaverton Code, you're going to see a lot of strikeouts, because a lot of things are moving into this document. Um, and I just, I, I don't wanna get, I don't want that to be lost, because that is another piece of this work. And together, they will be the complete package for the council and how you operate. We also added in here, and, and I brought that up because the agenda and placing items on the work session agenda, and how the, how the agenda is set, is currently covered in the Beaverton Code. Council subcommittees, that is a new section. There hadn't really been any rules around council subcommittees. So for example, this governance subcommittee and other subcommittees that have been formed, that's now been solidified in the rules, so you can look to a particular place and see what the common practice has been for this council. And then, um, public meetings and record, and record compliance, these rules also make it clear what a individual councillor's responsibilities are with regards to record retention and compliance with public meetings and avoidance of serial meetings. All of that is covered in these rules as well. And then finally, you know, in Section ten, there's a, a section on censure, which it's important to remember that the council, these are the council's rules. The council is the enforcer of its rules. Unless there is a rule that it would be a violation of a, of a law, or a or a different policy like the city's harassment policy or something like that, then you might have a different circumstance. But in general, the council's rules are the council's rules, and you enforce them as a body under Section ten censure. So, that responsibility is also laid out in, in your, the role draft that you have before you. So, that's again, just a brief overview of a handful of sections that cover various roles and responsibilities. But, um, there's a lot, and I would say that almost every section tou- touches this in some way or another. Uh, with that, I think I've said enough about roles and responsibilities, and that is essentially the end of the presentation. I will go through next steps, or do you wanna get feedback now, Mayor Beatty?
Um, let's get feedback now. Counselor Teeter?
Thank you, Megan. I've got a couple of questions. One is regarding Section two point seven C. It says that there's a, a requirement for twenty-four hour to have the agenda posted twenty-four hours in advance of a council meeting. But then, two point eight says that package should be shared by the five P M on Thursday before the council meeting. And I'm just curious about the, the difference there. How do we reconcile that? What does that mean?
So the difference, uh, when there's a special meeting, the minimum requirement is twenty-four hours. So we always shoot for, and the goal is to always have the agenda up the Thursday before. But in the case that a special meeting were called, then there is an allowance to have the agenda posted more than twenty-four hours in advance, which is what state law requires for a special meeting.
Okay, so that's just different types of meetings. Okay, that makes sense. Um, I've got another question about Section two point three and the presiding officer's duties. Um, Section two point three point B five. And this is the one that talks about the presiding officer being allowed to ask, please to remove a person from a meeting if they're being disruptive or disorderly destructive. And this is, we, we've had some tension here in the past, and I think this comes down to, in my mind, again, to the definition of disruptive or disorderly. Reading this document, I'm like, oh, somebody is being discriminatory or sharing language that is inflammatory or harassing. The presiding officer could ask them to leave. But based off of previous conversations, I'm curious if that's in line with, with state law? Do we have that flexibility? Would this policy give us that flexibility? Can you just talk more about that?
Sure. So this policy can't give you additional flex, or is not intended to give you additional flexibility, and really can't be on what would be allowed, right, under state, under state law. And what I mean by that is, if state law wouldn't provide a basis for, um, asking someone to leave a public meeting, then these rules aren't going to be able to broaden that to allow this council to have someone leave a public meeting if there's no other basis. And it does not, these rules don't define those terms. However, if you are in an in-person meeting, there is, if they're actually impeding the business of the council. So for example, you can't, they're, a person, for example, is yelling, or making such a commotion that you, as a body, actually cannot, you cannot continue with your business, that's a situation where you could have a person actually removed from a council meeting. It's different than the speech aspect that occurs during visitor comment. And so there is a distinction there. Um, that free speech, speech aspect, where a person is not disrupting the ability of the council to do its business. It's, the person is just taking their time to say what they choose to speak. That, that's different, and I, hopefully that distinction makes sense to you.
Yeah, yeah, it does. Thank you. No, that was helpful. Um, okay, I've got one final comment about the censorship section, if this is okay in time for that. I'm not gonna look back at my notes. Okay, so Section ten point one A says that when we feel like this, this code of conduct might be violated, we would report those to the mayor, uh, who serves as the political head of the council. And I am interested in seeing us add for the council president, um, to that. I think we have situations somewhere else in this document where we have council president if the concern is about the mayor, we report it to that person. Uh, so just adding a little flexibility there. Um, and then I'm wondering if you or anybody on the subcommittee can talk more about uh, Section ten point one C that's talking about, um, what we should do if somebody is determined to have violated the, the code of conduct, and what censorship actually means. Um, it says it's not intended to be punitive, um, but rather, uh, corrective or supportive. Um, and I'm just, I would love to hear any of y'all's thoughts who've worked on this a little bit more.
Well, from my perspective, I guess what I would say is that the types of sanctions are listed there at the very end, like a written warning, a public re- reprimand, or, you know, again, removal, which is very unlikely. Um, but tha- those are probably the most common sanctions, or it might just be coaching. It could be anything along those lines to, again, try to correct the behavior instead of penalize, right? You're trying to make your fellow councillors better councillors, so that the body can do its work better. And I, I think that's really what subsection C is trying to get to.
Yeah, and I, I would also add that, like, most rules don't have censorship in them, because it's not really like our responsibility to do that. It would have to be something so egregious, like murder, for us to intervene. And so I think that's why we are moving towards the more coaching, because there, especially when you're new, there are times where you don't realize what you're saying is wrong. Um, I've had conversations with probably all of you through that coaching lens of like, I don't think you intended it this way, but this is the way it's coming out. And like, we should be working towards that kind of relationship versus like, we're gonna like, put out a public document. But I, cause again, I think if it, the behavior is so egregious, we're gonna probably skip over the coaching, right? But I mean, in my eleven years, I cannot think of one incident in which the council would have acted in a censorship moment. So I think we spent more time planning around the everyday possibility of how we're gonna interact with each other versus the like, what if situation if it's so bad. Counselor Hartmeier Prigg?
Thank you. I, I use the raised hand, cause I didn't wanna like skip the line in the chat, but I wanted to, and on the, our subcommittee. Um, ten point one, we, we actually talked quite, or we, for censure generally, we talked so much about it. We kinda didn't want it in there. We also know that over the years, it has come up, it's been asked about, and we thought it would be better for us to document and put some things in here to try to encourage resolution and encourage, like, uh, like Attorney Thornton said, right, around kind of the correcting it. Um, ultimately, in my, maybe Pollyanna-ish way of looking at this, we get involved in local government because we care about our community, like, we do have similar reasons for wanting to help and take care of our community through serving on city council. So it, like, there's part of me that's like, we should just never need this. And at the same time, we are bought, we are members of a team, and like, all teams come with different personalities and different strengths, and so we wanted there to just be like a clear, clear mechanism. Um, Counsel Teeter, I actually remember specifically bringing up, should we be looking at bringing up concerns, um, to more than just the mayor? And ultimately, the mayor said, you know, I think it's really important that if someone has a concern about me, or if, if a future councillor has a concern about a future mayor, it's really important that the councillor be empowered and like, go directly to the mayor. Um, and so that's actually why we left it out, is we are, we're really trying to create like, open, direct communication, right? Like, uh, uh, among one another, especially because in this type of situation, that's likely going to be and should be a one-on-one conversation. You're not doing that on the record, you, there's no requirement to do that on the record, because it's between, you know, two members. So that's kind of where I felt pretty comfortable landing this was also maybe a little bit of that aspiration, right, of like, what kind of team am I hoping to be with my fellow city council? Um, in this case, also, our mayor has a lot more years of experience with this body. In this case, also, our mayor has a lot more years of experience with this body. And so she often plays a coaching role for us and that. We may not always have that in the person that is the mayor, like who's kind of like acting as like a natural coach or historian sometimes. But trying to create an environment where like, we deal with conflict or issues directly with one another with the intention that. We are working towards resolution and um like improving overall.
Councillor Tivnun?
Just to add one thing on uh top of what councillor Hartmire Prig just said is. Often when we were going through this work, we would say things like. For us or any future counselors or mayor, constantly trying to think through and challenge ourselves like, well, this isn't an issue for us. It's like, well, it's not an issue for us, but it might be down the road, so that was the other part of this was to try and make this a living document. That um took into consideration. That the current mix right now is the current mix right now, we don't know and can't control for who could get elected in the future. So the 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 guide, the guidance that's provided in the document tries to take into account. Scenarios that could play out, but also keeping it somewhat loose because if you start going down that path, you can really. You get tied up um in in uh over analyzing something. And so you'll notice that some of the language is purposely left fairly broad to give ourselves some wiggle room so that we can be pretty nimble. And how we respond as a body to this certain circumstances.
Great, okay, yeah, thank you all, I see the vision, I s- I appreciate it and you all done a lot of really good work here, so, thanks.
Thank you, I'll, I'm just, I don't wanna, I just want one last point here before we move to the next speaker, is that. As elected officials, we're expected to have hard communication with each other and other people and hard conversations all the time. If one of you brings a grievance about another, I'm gonna have to have that same hard conversation with the person that you're talking about. And so I think like, this is just the best way for us to communicate and do it, and again, like censorship. Is such a high bar, it is not, I don't like your personality, I don't like how you did this, like this isn't that, this is censorship. Where it is so egregious and so out there, that like, if it's something that bad, it's likely gonna involve the city manager, it's likely involve attorney. Beneath that, like, you're getting removed from office, how are we gonna work together going forward, and so that's kind of the lens that we talked about. And as someone that didn't get along with the previous mayor, I had to have lots of hard conversations with him and it was not easy. So I would just say like, this isn't about me or the past mayor or the future mayor, it's what our expectations of elected officials are. Councillor Duggar?
Uh, thanks Mayor, um. Thanks to the committee, this is, honestly, this is exactly what we've needed and I am incredibly grateful for this work and I wish we would have had it. Years ago and like, I think future councils are gonna really appreciate this, so on behalf of us, but also the people that replace us. Fantastic work, um I wanna apologize to the mayor and councillor Hussin for not giving each of you a heads up that I'm gonna bring this up. Um, I read this this weekend and I immediately thought I should call both of you. Um, to talk to you about why I was gonna bring up this point, um but I think for boards and commissions. We should, we should really consider limiting councillor family members from serving, um I know Mayor, I know your husband served. Um, uh councillor Hussin, your husband currently serves, mine wants to serve and I've advised him. Um, I I think this is, this is a little awkward for me because I appreciate so much. That we all commit so much and we're part of, we're part of families that. Commit so much to this community and those are vital voices, it just feels very conflict of interest to me. And it's why I've advised my husband, as much as he wants to be on boards and commissions, uh to not do this. And you know, and and it and it feels awkward for me to have the conversation with him, it feels awkward for me to bring it up now. But I just think about like. Situations even beyond us because that's the way my brain works, right, like a future councillor. It could be, there could be incredibly awkward conversations around confirming someone, right, like if if. If someone's spouse has a different opinion or uh maybe isn't qualified. Probably really incredibly awkward, I don't know, uh I haven't talked to the mayor, but probably incredibly awkward to. For the mayor to interview people or the staff to interview uh folks, right, like that feels conflict of interesty to me. Um, it fe- feels like a really conflict because I tried to picture Quinn. Sitting on the budget committee with us, right, does that mean I get two votes versus one each for you, that feels conflict of interesty to me. Um, and 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 I know there's technically nothing conflict of interesty about it because we don't benefit financially. But I've held myself to a really high standard, um and I and I'm asking the council to consider. Going further than what the law requires here and us holding ourselves and our family to a different standard. Than maybe is legally required, um I know that's awkward, I know, I I hate to bring it up, but but it really has been something that's been on my mind. You know, Quinn and I do talk about this a lot, I'm incredibly proud of the service that he does. Um, and I don't wanna end that, right, like, so we've had to navigate this ourselves, but I just. Like, it would be really helpful if there was guidance from an official policy document. To help me navigate that, and so, um and then the only other feedback I have. Is I, and and maybe this will come in next step, so Megan, I apologize for that too, but I really think. Not only is this fantastic, but we should approve it every two years, you know, throw it in the consent agenda, so that way the council. binds ourselves every two years to this, um you know, we might have new members and I think this. Someone brought up a really excellent point, right, for the candidates running for city council, um that they have an idea. But then we need to make them vote for it, that, so they have a say in the rules and I I, you know, maybe that's gonna happen anyway, but I would just highly recommend that. So that that's all I had, I'm incredibly grateful for this work and it's it's really super important.
Councillor Hartmire Prig?
Yeah, um. I will say it's validating to hear all of your questions and comments because we talked about a lot of these things. We really, really tried to channel each of you and your perspectives, like I know we did have a lot of input, but it is hard when we're working as a subcommittee to. Did we think of everything, um we did talk about this one as a group as well, um. I think we were just a little unsure of of how to land it. Um, but I personally would be open to us adding something and today is a work session and so if if there, you know, if there's interest. To add something like that, we could, I didn't know though, Megan, I, and I'm just like not recalling through our discussion if. If there was anything that maybe we couldn't restrict that, right, I'm I'm not, and maybe it's something we just need to research further, like. Is it inappropriate for us to say like that? You know, someone could not serve because they're a family member or not, like or even illegal or anything like that, I know we do a lot to avoid any. Appearance of conflict of interest and so, like, I I agree with councillor Duggar, I also would not want. Like, I would, if if my husband were interested, I'd probably dissuade him, um but also someone might have gotten on that. And then somebody got elected, right, so like, some of those things you can't always anticipate happening, but I am curious if. Do you remember if we researched this or what our discussion was?
Um, I could certainly, I don't recall, I do recall looking into this and I feel like it could potentially be covered. Somewhere either in, it might be in Beaverton Code two point one one, so I wanna take a look at that. And essentially, I think what I would wanna do is come back with some options for the council if we're going to add in a a provision. That would further restrict the participation of people beyond what's legally required, if if that's possible and that's the direction. Then I would put together some language that would accomplish that goal.
Yeah, and I would, for for me, I would really hope it would be the the boards really focused on advising the council, like I know there's an H tag group. Uh that's not set up to advise us and like, I might be a little more flexible in groups like that. Um, you know, if they're if they're advising staff or advising the city manager or or stuff like that, but. It it just feels particularly important for. Uh, boards that advise us.
We did, you know, we did have a pretty good conversation about this, I've also had conversations with this around the staff. Because our unofficial working rules in the past government was that the mayor's staff, the mayor's family couldn't serve. But under the last form of government, the mayor is the one that made the financial decisions, all the staff reported directly to him. So there was not a really a conflict of the counselors, that's when my husband served, when I uh made the decision to run and resign from the traffic commission. To just kind of comply with our gentleman's agreement of the past council that the mayor's family wouldn't serve. I would say now, I think it makes it challenging for staff or our spouses to serve. Because the, all of the staff report to the city manager and the city manager reports to the council. And so I would be inclined to think about a provision like this going forward because it makes it hard for staff. To figure out how to operate in this space, and when I talk to other mayors about this particular i- issue, there's no city around us that allows spouses to serve. This is like an old vessel of the last form of government where we are bifurcated enough in our responsibilities between the mayor and the council that we could have this. So we do need to think about in this new form of government where we make the policies, control the money and the staff report to the city manager that reports to us. How do we make it as clear as possible where people are at, and I think if we're gonna have a rule. It should be across all of our boards and commissions, even ones that report to staff because staff then eventually report that information to us. All right, John, any more questions? Councillor Hussin?
Yeah, um, I will start off and say like huge kudos for wrapping this all around you, um. Councillor Hartmire Prig, councillor Tivnun, Mayor Beatty, like. Oh, this feels like it was probably a beast to put together and um probably why it took long, right, because there was so much to do, so. Thank you so much for putting some work into it, I had just a very small number of comments, I wanted to kind of throw out to you all and. Okay, one question or comment, the conflict of interest section, um, I really appreciated the perspective. I was a little like concerned, like having someone leave the room because of conflict of interest and maybe Megan, if you wanted to shed some light. I think if someone expresses a conflict of interest and is sitting on the dais, like, I'm okay with that, but I didn't know if there was a reason for such a. Strong response, like must leave the room or that kind of thing, because to me, like, you're still a public body that like can, at least. Here, like, maybe you moved to the public section of the meeting, so what were your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so the idea behind that is if it is an actual conflict of interest, then you can't vote, and so the idea is. That even sitting at the dais, you might um. Interact in a way with the council even if you're not voting and it's easier if that individual who has the actual conflict just leaves the room. And then it doesn't impact the rest of the council and how they discuss the issue. So.
And it's only for actual, not.
It's only, it's for an actual conflict of interest, so you would actually benefit or have a detriment. If you were to vote on the item, so it's a very limited. Those aren't the ones that come up as often, right, potential conflicts of interest are the more common. Situation that that counselors are in, but um. Again, it's for the actual conflict of interest, and that was the reasoning behind it, then you can't essentially pressure or. Make it uncomfortable for the other individuals on the board that are trying to make a a decision.
Okay, I understand, I guess, like, the leaving the room felt a little too much for me, I will support what you all think, I just. Believe that. Um, I felt like leaving the room seemed a little bit far because when, I don't think we've had any actual conflicts, and I don't know that we will, but we could. Um, but I think as a member of the community that you should at least be able to listen to the discussion, so I guess I was just struggling with that. Maybe you leave the room, but you can still hear the discussion because you are a community member, so I'll kind of leave that out there for you all to think about. Um, the other comment I had was, I know that we talked about. Council communications to boards. But what I feel like I've lost pulse on is how we're informing each other about what's going on on boards and commissions. I thought at one point we had talked about a liaison update section to the city council. Can you help me understand or remember what where that is?
Yeah, we ultimately decided to leave that piece out because there's already mechanisms in which staff sit on the board, they go to the city manager. And the city manager's report will include that future information. And just given the intensity of our meetings and the schedule to schedule something like that, the subcommittee just felt there wasn't enough people wanting it. And there is this mechanism now in which staff are reporting and we've asked the city manager to the city manager report. That this would be enough, and when we talked to all other cities and how they're operating, most people don't operate this way because there's no standard. It eats up time and we're already can't get through enough of our business, so the subcommittee ultimately landed on, we have this mechanism in which it exists already. Councillor Hartmire Prig?
And if I recall, I think we also thought that because we have. Like the the council new business, I think, I can't remember, you know, where we, where that landed, the top or the bottom. That if there's something like really pertinent, that like, it could be brought up there, we didn't wanna establish it as a rule that like, you must. Report out or anything like, you know, like, we didn't wanna create that, like, because you sit as a liaison, you now owe. Uh, a report out because um we we were discussing how like, you know, the. Because I serve as a liaison, am I now suddenly their advocate or something, right? And we didn't wanna establish like a rule that like, just because you're their liaison, you know, like, it's not expected that you have to come back to council and advocate. Or, you know, even necessarily try to drive something forward that they are. Uh, you're you're informed by it, you bring that lens to your decision-making and you can always share. Uh, like, the information you've heard by serving as that liaison. As it contributes to like a decision-making that we're making, right, but we thought that we didn't wanna establish something formal because. It could put a counselor in an awkward position if, for example, you know. I'm not even gonna name an example because whatever I would give, I'm sure would be taken out of context and feel really awkward, so. But you can imagine, right, where you may have different values than the border commission that you are liaising with. And we didn't wanna put a counselor in a weird position to have to necessarily, you know. Uh, now have a responsibility to report on or advocate on or anything like that on behalf of that. Just because you served as the liaison.
And we asked the city manager to create a new work plan for boards and commissions and where it is de-incentivizing our role to be more communicators. In the meetings than we are because that's been a vessel of the past that like, we take up a lot of space, so in this new, where the city manager is setting. Kind of the expectations that the boards are gonna work on things, like, we need to let it kind of come through that same channel, councillor Tivnun?
Yeah, and and just a a further note about um trying to establish neutrality on the part of. All counselors regardless of the boards or commissions that they're serving on sets the next counselor up to be able to do that as well. Whereas um, I mean, I've served on some boards and commissions, I feel so passionate about what they're doing and. Uh, I kinda have to keep myself in check and I have to like not pipe up when they're having conversations about the topics because it's not. I had to keep reminding myself that the power differential in the room and the the weight of my words is different when I'm serving in this role. Versus just attending an event and talking to one of them informally, and even in that instance, you know, it still carries the weight. Whether I want it to or not, and so it's, I'm constantly thinking of. The way in which I approach this role, hopefully the next counselor will approach it in similar ways just to create a a certain. Base level of consistency across all of our boards and commissions and how the counselors are showing up and into that role. But a- again, to that point of just having some sort of guidance. Like this going in on the front end of becoming a counselor, it would have been really helpful because I think all of us kind of thrown in the deep end on what exactly is a liaison. And how you do it effectively, so I do think that this is one area that um again, we we kept it. Somewhat broad, um but as the the nature of the boards and commissions is changing because of these work plans, this might. Might evolve over time, I could see that being a possibility.
Okay, yeah, and I I hear you and I know we're going through that process, so I guess my only. Like concern or comment is I think some of the boards and commissions are are seen as as their advocate, which you're right. Councillor Hartmire Prig, we're not, but then how how are we making so they understand that, so. I'm good, I just wanted to kind of mention that, because it was something that had been on my mind, uh my last one was on page twenty four. And it was D, um and it was just about, and I think I've brought this up before, a council member who's not an appointed liaison. Should advise anybody, should refrain from attending the meetings, um I I'm, that's fine with me, I just think generally speaking. If something were to happen, um you know, if we were to have some sort of an instance and folks wanted to listen to members of a specific board. On that instance or on that issue, I guess I'd like to find a way that we were able to show that we're listening to that, so. I just wanna put that again on your radar, I don't think that it needs to be like, I mean, I don't know that it needs to be there or gone, but. There's a part of me that just imagines that if there was a moment that we needed to all listen or we needed to find a way to um. Engage that we weren't limiting ourselves in that, so I do think also some of these opinions and comments will change as the board. Commission work plan involves Jenny and the city managers, so um thank you so much for this, this was a huge request and um, yeah, thanks.
Well, now, I'll just tell you, we we talked. Well, I'll just tell you, we we talked a lot about that, cause I I generally share. Where you're at of like, I want to be able to go and listen. Where I think it could run awry is if. More of us show up and now it's a public meeting and we've not. Noticed it, and so it's it's a big staff burden for us to do that. And it also, you know, we get deference. If we wa- if I walk into a room, they're gonna let me speak. If you walk into a room, they're gonna let you speak, and like, how are we gonna manage that? Um, and so I think that's why we ended up where we were here, that like, we need to kind of like. We all can't go and listen. We all can't do that stuff. And if it's something so. Monumental, like the liaison probably should be talking to the city manager and I about a work session or getting it forward. And so I think that's the piece that. We all want to be, we all want to do, but like our roles here is so vastly different now, and that that's why we have the liaison to the board is to avoid. This issue where there's a quorum, or avoid an issue where we're in the room. And there's no, I think, hard way for us to write that in a rule that's gonna make it okay. Because what is it? First, the first three people that walk through the door get to go, and that's where I think we're gonna end up with some issues. Counselor Kimmy?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for all your work. It's hard to meet once a month. For whole year. I don't know who bought the lunch or coffee, but kudos to you. Uh. Uh, I have a one, just a few questions, uh, with communications, two point one three. I think right now we have, do we have a rule with virtual cop visitors that you have to register by like noon that day or day before?
Yes, we do currently have a practice of requiring registration to speak for all all participants and visitor comment.
Right, but the visitor, the in-person visitor can come in that day and then, and then um. Uh, fill out a paperwork and then you can make a comment, no?
No, we're actually requiring all of our speakers, both in person and virtually to to register to speak.
At what time?
When is the deadline to register?
Yeah. Is it, what I'm saying is, is it saying for both?
Yes, exactly. It's the same deadline for all, and the idea behind that is then. We can only take so many speakers, right? So they all need to have the same deadline, so that all of the speakers can register. And then the practice has been to allow those who are planning to speak in person. To speak first and then move to the virtual commenters, but it doesn't change. That the first fifteen people to register, whether virtual or in person, get to speak.
Yeah, yeah, I, my my misunderstanding, I thought, I thought timing was, I thought you could, in person, you could come in and do it, but I guess I was wrong. Thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem.
Regards to censure, section ten, um. I I read it, it's it's good. But. It's not good when we actually have a. When we actually have a big issue, where the s- the the significance of that offense. Arises to the level of censure. Uh, that. The personal differences, I think you can talk to people, you can talk to the mayor, whomever. Work it out, that's no problem. But if if somebody violates significant enough. Whatever that reason is. That's bordering illegal somewhat, but then when I read it. It's not really clearly laid out how you go about doing, sort of so solving the problem. Where you can talk to the mayor. But then how are you gonna take an action? So let's say I stole. Something. And against the law, violated the law, something needs to be done, then what happens? How are you gonna take that action? Can somebody tell me, or is it laid out? Cause my concern is that. If 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 it arises arises to the level that some, something has to be done. But it's not clearly laid out, then that's up for discussion, then we can. Um, come up with our own way of interpretation, then eventually nothing might get done until next election cycle. And the reason I bring this up is when I was, um, you know, head of. You know, the nonprofit organization, something like this happened, and because that clearly laid out. Uh, the person was doing the same thing and creating a problem until the next election cycle. Which almost uh destroyed the 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 organization. So, at it. It's it's all okay. But it's really not clearly, there's no process laid out clearly how you you go about doing it.
Counselor Hartmeyer Prig, did you have something to add?
Uh, yeah, so. We needed to add. So. The rules that this document have to be taken in partnership with the charter. So our charter outlines how one can be removed from office. And for what types of violations, right? That that's an appropriate response. There's that balance of we're accountable to the voters, right? That the voters. Can choose to, you know, remove us from office by a recall, by not voting us in the next time. Um, but in terms of like, what do we have power as a body to do, that is listed in in three point one. Or three, three point one zero, remove from office in our city charter. And this says like, you know, you must have five members, and here's how. Or here are the things that if someone did this, they could be removed by like the members of the council. Censure is, you know, kind of a public reprimand, right? It's saying. Counselor Hartmeyer Prig did something that is really against the values of our council and. Um, you know, Counselor Hussin has gone to Counselor Hartmeyer Prig or to the mayor to talk about this concern that she has. And Counselor Hartmeyer Prig continues to, you know. Violate these rules. Counselor Hussin or the mayor could then say, you know, it's city new business. I'm actually moving that we're censuring Counselor Hartmeyer Prig today, and it's really a statement by the council that just says like. That doesn't represent us, right? We disagree with that, that. That's, that is not representative of us. So the body that this person is acting counter to the rules that we all said we'd agree to. So. If I think you kind of have to look at them together, um, and. And know that like if one of those really bad things happens, like then we go to the charter, and the charter tells us what to do. If this is like behavioral, doing things kind of to our values, right? We want to really see what can we do to work with it within ourselves. Before going to that like public. Condemnation or reprimand or whatever it is.
I mean, I I hundred percent agree with the, what agree with your. Opinion, uh, statement. Uh, but my point comes back to it is that I have no intention of removing anyone. I don't think we can at all until the next cycle anyways. Uh. But. How? It's not there. So what I'm saying is, let's say it doesn't work out. And. It 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 happened already, very bad thing happened, something has to be done. So. It doesn't say that, okay, somebody needs to make a motion.
But we also wouldn't be held to do it in that faction. And so the thing is, is like, we can't have rules for everything. And the charter is very limited on our ability to remove it, like, this is probably the only charter in the state that allows, which I argued against when we were doing it. That we should not even be allowed to do this. This is circumventing voter choice here. If we decide Allison Tivnan embezzled money and we're gonna remove her. That's not really our decision to make. That's the voter's decision to make. And again, I guess the so what of it? If you don't like me. And you want to reprimand me in public, do you think any process is gonna, like, the so what of it is? We don't have the power to do that to each other. And so. If you, like, the way that you would do it is anything else. You do council new business, I want to make a recommendation, I want to have a censorship on the next. Do we have four people that agree? It's not any different than any other motion or how we operate.
Okay, like, yeah, I I want to make sure that I. I don't think, I don't think we can remove anyone from anywhere anyways, so that's not the intention. It's just that. Uh, if it, if it's at least mentioned, the process is mentioned, this is how you go about doing a censorship. From the council, then we wouldn't have this this discussion at all, that they know what to do. If something like that happened, then uh, that's what I'm saying, uh, that. So maybe mayor, you can talk to them, I can talk to the mayor and say, hey. I I noticed this, I think this arises to the level of censure. Is that, is that how you recommend somebody going about?
Well, I would first recommend that anyone is thinking of censure, that they talk to me and the city manager, because again, like, this is a tool. That I've never even seen wielded on any council in the state in the eleven years that I've been elected. And we're spending a lot of time talking about something that very likely is not going to happen. And so. I just think like, how we would handle it would probably determine on the severity and what we're doing, and even if we wrote out the steps. You would likely do it a very different way. Like, I can't imagine, and I don't know, Bill, Megan, like, if you want to help me out here, but it's just like. I don't think we could even really write a process for this, because every situation is gonna be so different. The way that we have to tackle it is so different. And again, like, we are not beholden, like, we are not each other's hammer here. We are all responsible to the voters.
Right, I I totally agree. But.
Bill, you're unmuted. Did you have something?
Well, the uh. Robert's Rules of Order are kind of our, when whenever there's a void, we go to that. And so you're going to find something similar to um, make a motion. Uh, the notice and the opportunity to be heard to answer the censure. So I do think that there is a way to uh find a process that's fair. Um, as an example, I think Megan would agree. The idea that you walk in one day and unannounced. Make a motion to censure someone, and then everyone says yes, and you censure them, that's not a a fair proceeding. Um, notice and an opportunity to be heard and be prepared. But those rules can come from um, uh, Robert's Rules of Order, which is our default. Uh, if we need to create a process. Megan, did you think there was anything else that you said?
No, the, I think that's. You're right, though, Robert's Rules can certainly provide um. Provide a basis. And then the only other thought I had is that. The mayor made the comment that different. Types of potential violations of the rules, which again, that's what you're censuring for, is a potential violation of the council rules. Would maybe have a different process, and. There might be an instance that rises to the level where it requires an investigation or something like that by a third party and. And that was the only other thought I had is that. Again, it would kind of depend on the type of rule that was alleged to be violated, but there might be. A modification to a process, even in Robert's Rules. Um, which you could use as a basis, but you might have to modify it, just depending on on what the circumstances are.
Right.
That's a challenge in drafting it.
Yeah, this is my last comment, um. This is exactly what I'm saying, is that. We as a council now have to discuss about how we're gonna do this. Where this is an opportunity for us to discuss it now. So if this ever happens, ever, ever happens. That is, that this has been thought out and process has been laid out. Uh, I mean, I I don't have to do this now, but but what I'm saying is, is it gives us an opportunity to talk about it. But even though we are talking about it, we're not even sure. We have two city attorneys sitting here, and they're not even. How are we gonna do this? So this is something, um, I think it's an opportunity for us to discuss, not too much, but. Maybe reference some other cities that has done it before. Uh, to do it, but that's my my opinion, so if you, that's just my personal opinion, but.
Well, I'll I'll take a moment to pontificate as the historian for a minute and tell you why this is in the charter. It was so, it was aimed at Denny Doyle. And so this doesn't exist in any of the cities around us, because of the problems we're talking about here. I don't, we could ask the city attorney to drop something up, but I'm telling you, it's not gonna follow the path that you think it's gonna follow. It's gonna really dictate every time, and it's gonna be different. And so I think if you find yourself in this situation, you gotta read Robert's Rules of Order, you gotta look at the charter, and you gotta look at this, and you gotta kind of come up with a plan. I don't really honestly, unless there's four other people here, see a path. Where I want to spend more energy on this, because it's just not. Gonna happen, and it shouldn't even be in our charter, and our charter is a referendum on the past person that served as the mayor, and so many of the things in it are about that. And so like, that's where I think it's challenging, is that the council felt like they couldn't like censure him, because he controlled the money and all that stuff. That doesn't exist in a city manager form of government. We all have equal voices at the table, and so. I mean, I, are there four other, are there four counselors that want us to continue to dive down on this? Because it's, it is, we spent a lot of time on the subcommittee, and we could not find a path for this. The language that we presented, we feel like. Represented probably hours and hours of of communication on this, but. I'm happy to see the city, the city attorney back, if we want to have this looked at deeper, but I need to see four people that want it. Okay, I don't, I don't think there's a consensus to want to spend more time on this particular topic. I'm sorry, Edward, if you want to censor us, I'll help you walk through it in the future.
No problem, let's let's drink the coffee. Thank you.
Counselor Hussin?
All right, just wanna add one thing. Um, is it possible on the work session portion, it says that. Um, both mayor, uh, I think it was mayor can suggest org, and I don't, I think Mayor Baby would do a good job, but are we open to having it mayor and council in case in the future? Different folks wanted to suggest org, does we feel that it's not?
Can you tell me what section you're talking about?
Give me a minute. It was like, um, helping with work sessions, and I think it was the idea of. Um. I think it was more like the mayor can identify organizations, and maybe it didn't include council. Sorry, I need to.
This is out of our charter language. That the mayor and the city manager do this, so that's why it it exists here, and I would also be. Uncomfortable with a city counselor doing it, cause I'm the only one that has direct communication with everybody, like the city manager, and so. And it's charter language that we adopted it from.
Okay, and I think I was just, I mean, I'm not saying it shouldn't just be just like either or and or collectively, but um.
Counselor Hussin, were you talking about section two point nine, placing items on a work session or meeting agenda?
I'm like, truth is really fast to send this. It's okay, it's fine. It wa- it was something that I just, I had in my notes that I forgot to mention, and it was just about. I think it was more about like suggesting org, so I'll take a look and.
What I would say in general about these rules, and you'll see this throughout this, throughout the rules, it'll say something like. Um, you know, a majority of the council. And so something like an agenda item does not get added. Just because one counselor requests it during council business, right? It gets, it gets added to a future agenda, because during the conversation at that moment. There are at least four of you, a majority of the council who's interested in seeing that item come forward, and that's when the city manager will bring it forward in the in the future. And so there's multiple times that that comes up in the rules, and again, always trying to get back to this idea that. If we're gonna change the work plan or the direction. The staff is going based on a change in council direction, we want to make sure it's a change of the entire council and not just a singular member.
That works, thank you.
All right, Megan, you want to go through next steps?
I will. So next steps, we have done a lot of work, and I wish I would say it was completely done, but it's not, right? I'll go back and and consider all the comments and incorporate any changes, and we'll go over that as the subcommittee. To finalize this document you have before you. But then the other piece that I mentioned earlier is this ordinance and the adoption of chapter two point one one. Which the subcommittee has been so busy working on the the council rules, it was really critical that these get finalized. Um, so now the next step will be to go look at the. The Beaverton Code, chapter two eleven, make sure that the two documents work together in the way that they're intended. And then my expectation is that we'll probably hold one more work session, that will go over the Beaverton Code. Two point one one, and perhaps any major changes, although I honestly didn't hear a lot of major changes coming out of tonight's work session. So I think we're ninety-five percent of the way there is the way I feel about it after, after the work that you have all done tonight. So with the completion of the two documents, then we'll be moving to adopt them. So hopefully, we're looking at just, you know, a few months from now, early winter, spring twenty twenty-five, finishing this up. And you'll have a brand new set of council rules and an ordinance.
Some, uh, I just want to thank you, Megan, for the work that you've done, like getting three elected officials in a room, keeping us on track. Rem- reminding us to keep the main thing, the main thing. Megan disagreed with us a lot of. Megan disagreed with us a lot of times, like not in a disrespectful way, but kind of brought us back through the perspective of. Her experience as a city attorney, not here, but other places and her relationships. And that the counselors that didn't serve on the subcommittee should really know that we often would say like, oh, I don't know, Counsel Duggar would probably think this. Oh, Counsel Hassan would probably think this. We really like. What's made this process easier is I think we all know each other really well and we know where people's values are. And we've heard so much from you guys individually, like not about this exact thing, but so much about this that I think like. We really like, the reason there isn't so much pushback is I think you all can see yourself in this document. And I think that should be the marquee on how a subcommittee operates. And I would say this one and the city attorney subcommittee, like, I would just say like. This is exactly what I thought would should happen with subcommittees and how we get work done in this form of government with a large city council. And really, I just want to applaud everyone serving to move that work forward. And this is now our fifth subcommittee where we have produced. As a body, really great work that could have never been done with seven of us in a public meeting. So I would just say like, I'm just. Proud of us, the work that we've done, the city manager being in those meetings too. This is a lot of work on staff. And Carla, of course, for organizing, it's no easy task. So this would be my. Point to as a great example of what we can do in subcommittee work. So when we're facing big problems going forward. I want us to remember how we did the transportation committee, how we did this, how we did the city manager hiring, how we've done the. Assistant um, city attorney hiring and just say like, this is, I think, the best kind of work that we've done. We've been able to go in depth and have a meeting and talk about it among the seven of us. With that, is there anything the city manager wants to add before I let everyone go for the evening?
No, everything you said.
Good. I can see you're still in the office, so maybe you want to go home today too. So. Awesome. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see everyone next week.